Unity Day, that was held at the middle, at the high school. The students appeared to have a good time. Mr. Maher gave some very encouraging words of advice. Also went to the spring concert, spring concerts, part one. Although we have, you know, had to go through some changes due to budget cuts. You wouldn't know by the performances, the kids were awesome. It was, kind of felt like I was at a professional performance. And most recently, I was at Lennox for their field day. Got to participate in the tug-of-war. If you want to see pictures of that, you can go on my Facebook page. Also attended Brookside's end-of-the-year carnival. What a wonderful way to close out the year after kids working so hard with the Common Core. And while I was there, I got to tour the school and see the 60th anniversary projects that the kids did. Wonderful, wonderful work they did. It was very impressive. Students obviously put a lot of work and time into those projects. And this past Monday, I attended the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association Dinner Workshop for newly-elected school board members. The material was printed at the workshop, was very informative. What I found more interesting was to hear what was going on in other school districts. And we always have room for improvement here in Baldwin, but some of the things that I was hearing, I was like, "God, I'm in Baldwin." So finally, I'd like to give kudos to the faculty and staff at the middle school for a very well-run awards ceremony last night. And I'd also like to congratulate all the parents and students who received awards last night. It's very nice of them.
Thank you. Anybody here?
My schedule is not nearly as open as Ms. Reed's, so I was not able to attend nearly as many events, although I did, I did try. Going way back to just after the last meeting, I went to the Plaza musical production. It was, as usual, wonderful. We have two, we have one of the co-directors and the musical director here, so I want to thank them for another wonderful production. The kids were tremendous. The music was wonderful as well. And the one thing that I noted there was that, because that was the Wizard of Oz, the high school had done the whiz. They were able to share, the high school was able to share some of the sets with Plaza, which was, which was great. I think it really added to the production. And not only that, some of the kids from the high school came back to help on crew. And I think some of the middle schools too came back to help out. So it was really, it was a great show and a great, really, I thought it was a great community event in that regard. I went to the 6th grade and 8th grade honor roll breakfasts. The only reason I didn't go to 7th grade was because that was at the same time as the school-to-career breakfast. And it was just great to see all these kids doing incredible, incredible things academically. And then, and some of the kids at school-to-career were some of the kids here. Just phenomenal, phenomenal, phenomenal students. I went to both the middle school and the high school national honors, National Junior and National Honor Society events. Saw a great trombone quartet at the high school. That was really, really wonderful. Among all the kids, just a really great class of kids at the high school getting inducted. I was also at the In Recognition of Excellence Dinner. What a wonderful, wonderful event, a way to thank the teachers that do some incredible things for our students here. I was at the concert, the second spring concert at the high school. As usual, was the Wind Symphony and the Chamber Orchestra, just really such incredibly talented kids that we have. Actually, the night before the spring concert, I was at St. Agnes for the South Shore Symphony production. It was incredible production, but I felt, I felt like I was cheating Baldwin here by not paying money to see these kids perform because they really gave the South Shore Symphony a run for their money. So that was great. And then I was at the 8th grade awards last night. And again, just some really great, great kids coming out of this school district and the middle school looking forward to some great things at high school. And that's it. Thank you.
I too was at a lot of things. This is, this is the time of year, obviously, when there's a lot going on. I was at the school-to-career breakfast, as well as the mentoring dinner, which was held here at the high school for all of the students in the district who are being mentored and along with their mentees and some of their family members. And that was a, really an impressive evening. There's, I believe, over 150 mentoring pairs. So there are mentors from outside, from businesses, people in the community, and also members of our staff, but it's very impressive. And when you listen to the difference that those adults made in the lives of those students, it was, it was truly touching. And there were students there that said that they would not be there without the help of this adult and without the guidance of this adult. So it's a, it really is a marvelous program. And then, the comment was made that the program started with five mentors, and now it's up to 150. So it's, it's mighty impressive. I was also blown away. I went to the second high school spring concert, and it was breathtaking. And I have to do a shout-out to Mr. Dunn, who, you know, as brilliant as the children were and how wonderfully they performed, he selects music that is very challenging. And it was, it was amazing how well they did on music that was very difficult to perform. Let's see, In Recognition of Excellence was, as Karen pointed out, just, just a marvelous, marvelous evening. And I also, as did Joel, attended the middle school and high school honor society inductions, which were great and really showcased some extraordinary kids. And I'll leave it at that. Okay. Um, all right, let's, we'll open the floor to questions and comments from members of the public. Try to keep your comments succinct, please, as we have a full agenda of business. But the floor is open at this point. Just give us your name and address so we can respond if necessary.
... How is the list of like... Well, you maintain the robust standards, which are a very important fact. You still admire your own today. You continue to brag about last year's 57% morality and unnecessary 7% tax. Thanks for having me over. The whole purpose of the 2% tax is to rein in the unfettered tax evasion by abusive local students and others. Passing budgets like shooting fish in a barrel, scare hammers, and march high school seniors to the voting booth, which have problems marching seniors to commence with dissension. Our fourth school ranked very low on Long Island Schools, near or in the bottom four. Student achievement has continually diminished the past two decades. Our rankings are terrible. Average would be a tremendous cut rate for all. You keep political success, but the consistent result has been educational deterioration. You place your fellow forty members to get out of the issue, the propulsory, the real decision that's already going through. You only, then you elevate him to superintendent. These are all your machinations. And the man who fulfilled the fourth grant only managed to damage his own health. At your behest, our favorite programs were necessarily cut despite an $8.4 million operating budget prior to you. You hand-expect superintendent, both of both alarm, and they betray you, the school district, and his hometown by quitting after one year. Congratulations, Mrs. O'Hagan, for your empty victory in terms of that. When are you going to learn that the priorities of our teachers and administrators are as solid, salary, benefits, pensions, and vacations, and lagging in the rear for student achievement? It's about time the school board takes charge and reverses the pecking order. All we need is a turnaround. Our students have to work longer and harder, and we need our teachers there to help them. We need 24 days of construction, 180 departments to match them. We need a turnaround, but our teachers and administrative will regularly add four weeks to their endless substandard work. Remember therefore, our salary, benefits, pensions, vacations, and funding lagging behind especially for student achievement are all needs to be served. Your legacy, Madam Vice President, is abusing taxes, overpay educators, and deteriorating educational results. We're paid for a Ferrari that can't resist speed, and we have to fill it with eight dollars a gallon of fuel. That's your legacy. And that sums up the term today for all these students.
Are there any other comments? Yes?
Is there an update about the 2% increase on the agenda?
There isn't an update on the agenda. It's in process. It's in the process. And as soon as this information will, you know, will make it public, but right now it's, it's in the process of interviews.
Do you think that there are any, is there, do you have any thinking adding to the list for the meeting? Or do you not know either way?
Well, I, we don't know either way at this point. As I said, the interviews are in process, so I can't really comment any further than that.
We do have, I guess, I think we do have two more board meetings to speak for. There's some... Things are...
Okay, then I, yes?
The project that Mr. Dunn actually tried to take the commercial banking, um, out of the... And that's what I'm... We are trying to recruit people on the college. So that means, that's such a... We need a set of... College. That you're considering our people. That's what I'm... That's what I'm...
I agree. I agree. As a leader in education, he is just extraordinary. What he is able to bring from his students is just amazing. And I think that's about great teaching and great leadership. And I agree. It's, it's, he really gets a level of performance that's astonishing. It's amazing. Okay, I think we'll resume our business meeting then. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CE 504 Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in February, March, April, and May 2014 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Because this involves the names of individual children, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Robori, seconded by Mr. Press. Again, this involves the names of individual children, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the creation of an elementary free and reduced lunch program effective July 1st, 2014.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? Yes?
I just wanted to, I want that the...
No, yeah, okay, am I, okay. Just looking at this, I don't want to make an assumption, but I must, there's a difference... Oh, you have a question? The same question, or what? Did I miss that?
You're talking about the bid, that's number two.
Oh, am I in the wrong spot? I'm sorry. Never mind. I'm ahead of myself, sorry. Okay. Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education accepts an award to the only responsible bidder, the revised bid, from preferred meals for the 214-15 Elementary Free and Reduced Lunch Program as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments?
Now I can ask the question. I was, I noticed on the information that we got from Mr. Scannell, there's a difference between what we're offer, what the price point is and what we're going to be charged. The difference is going to be used to do, to do what?
The difference is used to, to a certain extent, offset the cost of some of the reduced meals, and it's also used to offset our own expenses. The cafeteria fund is generally self-sustaining, so we do have to charge a full price for the meals that is enough to cover the costs of the employees, the food, the items, and so.
Okay.
And that 350 will make us consistent with the high school, and then probably a year later, all three buildings charging the same price.
Okay.
So we're paying 230, charging?
Yeah, and actually, I made a two, a typo, it was 238.
Oh, 238.
I'm sorry. Yes, and we had negotiated a lower price when we got to the fact that it was just one bidder, so we were like, "I'm going to take about 20 cents a meal."
Okay. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education accepts an award to the lowest responsible bidders, all Southwest Transportation Consortium bids, from the May 29th, 2014 bid opening at the Baldwin Union Free School District as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the consultant contract with Ms. Pat Van Hazel to provide consultant services for the school-to-career program for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, yes, I'm just looking at extra information because of a couple of words you wrote that more information to give in, so this contract is four hundred and fifty dollars per day, and it's based sixty-six days, and it's a 20 million dollars...
Okay, sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the SECRRA resolution as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there questions or comments?
I just want to say, since the city environmental policy review asked, and some of our... Like to action, so we'll further review, I guess, the requirements that are necessary. And is this, this is...
No, that's, no, that's another one. This is the, more work from the Capital Reserve Project that were approved, not May 2014, but May 2013. This is the last one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Wait, 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 I just gave out the wrong information. I'm sorry. Yes, it is the Ball Fields. Yes, I'm sorry. This is the Ball Fields, and this is being paid for with a grant from the county, and it's being implemented by a company that employs challenged individuals.
The Board of Education awards the masonry and roof reconstruction and window re...
No.
I'm sorry. I apologize. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The Board of Education awards the masonry and roof reconstruction and window replacement contract number one bid to A1 Construction and Renovation, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments?
The total amount is approximately 992,000.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the BOSI's letter of intent for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
Um, I'd like to say that the total amount is 525,000,137, which is a decrease of over a million dollars from last year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the updated health form and letter as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there questions or comments? Eight.
Yes, eight.
Eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the Health and Welfare Services contracts with the Floral Park, Bellrose, Freeport, North Merrick, and Westbury Union Free School Districts for the 2013-14 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
I'm just going to give you the amount. Floral Park, per child is 700, the park leaves at 20 dollars, and it'll be one student. Three, four, and five, that's about 733 dollars per student to get one student's work merit. It's approximately 1,025 per student. I know why there is a 1,000,000, for intent kids, so you have 10,000 dollars. Westbury is 741 for students, and there's something to be prepared for that.
And, Mr. Scannell, those rates are set by?
Those rates are governed by the state, but in this particular case, the individual school district has to fill out paperwork that relates to the health, their health and welfare costs. So depending upon the health and welfare costs, primarily nurses, in a particular district, it does vary a little bit, but the state defines what's allowed to go on.
So you've...
No. No, that's the point. We don't have any choice. They set it, but it's based in part on state regulations. Yeah. Yeah.
And we have one of our own that we flow for the district's amount. I shouldn't have said it out loud because I knew you were going to...
I don't remember what it is either. Well, hand. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves the contract with Access 7 Services, Inc. to provide occupational speech counseling resource room and CSE meeting services for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Robori, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments?
I'm just saying, I'd love you that the ratings for individual sessions were 38, 50 dollars per session, session 25, or 125, and there is no increase in the fees rates from last year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending a private residential school for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. That is SCO Family of Services, Westbrook Preparatory School. The cost per student is $50,321. There is one student going for a total of $50,321.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? Sure.
As I was reading this report, there's a section on it that says that these rates are subject to change because they're negotiated, I guess, with the state. So we're voting on something that might change?
A little bit, but you're also voting on something that you don't really have too much of a choice about.
Okay.
Because the rate will be set by the state, and the fact that this child needs to go to this place has been established under the law, you know, in accordance with the CSE, which is heavily defined by the law, so...
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for two students attending private residential schools for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to read the amount. It's the Developmental Disabilities Institute. The cost per child is $46,807. There will be two students attending for a total of $93,614.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending a private residential school for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. This is for Little Flower Union Free School District Institute, and it, the cost is $42,939. We have one student attending for a total of $42,939.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending a private residential school for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. This is for Summit School. The cost per student is $29,174. We have one student attending for a total cost of $29,174.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending a private residential school for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. This is for the Laval School for the Blind. The cost per student is $70,156. The number of students attending is one for a total cost of $70,156.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending a private residential school for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. This is for the Carol and Frank Beyondi Educational Center. The cost per child is $39,038. We have one student attending for a total cost of $39,038.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for one student attending a private residential school as of May 7, 2014, for the 2013-14 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. This is for Harmony Heights School. The cost per student is $25,389. We have one student attending, 25, for a total of $25,389.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
I do actually have one. So this contract was actually just covering May 7 through the end of June. Is that right?
This went just two months.
So, so the amount there is going to be prorated?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves a contract for three students attending a private residential school for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. This is for Harmony Heights School. The cost per student, $25,389. We have three students attending for a total cost of $76,167.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the contract with Erickson Translations, Inc. to provide translation services for the 2013-14 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
I'm just saying that the total amount was 385 dollars, and it was someone who... The media intended for the validation of the media.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education approves the contract with Ms. Tracy Romano to provide parent training services for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mrs. Robori, seconded by Mr. Press. Are there questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you, I'm just curious as to what kind of services Ms. Romano provides, like...
With the CSE.
Okay, I get that.
So say, okay, so say a student has autism or behavioral issues, and they get services in school, and then the parent also gets training so that they can have carryover into the home. Or, that's just an example, but that's kind of...
And the only thing I would add is these are as-needed contracts as well, is that we accumulate agreements with a, a number of people, so we have a group, depending on what our needs are to rate at given time, so, you know, we could just add.
And the, her fee is $60 per hour, $50 to attend a CSE meeting, and this is no increase from the prior year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the contract with LexisNexis Accurant for Government Services, Inc. to provide public record search services for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
And the fee is $2,255 in terms of the people in prior years.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves a contract with USA Shred LLC to provide shredding services for the 2014-15 school year as... for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, there wasn't like an increase from last year. I don't think it's much a dollar, fifty dollars for first for the month's whole shred, um, but the total amount for the year is two thousand, seventy nine dollars. I don't think it was a big difference.
Yes, but it, because it, yes, the first time they come for the year and get it, that first tote, because that first trip and it involves them having to come out and put the tote in place is slightly more expensive than them coming back each subsequent time. And if we added totes, we would have that first thing, but we use the service in the people personnel offices as a different office, so we don't have ourselves having extra totes distributed throughout the year. So it really would just be for that first time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education approves the contracts with Centrus Group LLC to provide Centrus Sync Module to allow e-school and IEP Direct to share demographic information for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, the total amount for the year is approximately twenty five hundred and I actually have a question, so is this the, um, the.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the contract with Centrus Group LLC to provide annual subscription for IEP Direct basic support and maintenance for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
Um, the cost for the thirteen thousand, approximately thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the contract with Centrus Group LLC to provide annual subscription for New York State Education Department Directors and for Baldwin Authorized Users for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
And we must get the contract at approximately two thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the not to exceed transfers of fund balance as detailed in the Friday mailing. Workers' compensation reserve not to exceed two million, five hundred thousand dollars. Retirement contribution not to exceed two million dollars. Capital reserve not to exceed one million, five hundred thousand dollars.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the Industrial Arts Middle Schools, I guess, Middle School Supplies Bid Number 002-2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, so I'm just giving you a little more information because we have, that's whether to comment, the, they have, to be known as, and it's a little five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the Science Supplies Bid Number 004-2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mrs. Robori. Seconded by Mr. Press. Oh, I'm sorry. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, yeah.
You are on number twenty eight.
So, um, it can be eight hundred and five, two hundred and ninety, eight, twenty three dollars, two, that's it, so that's inclined, sort of, approximately two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards the Science Consumables Supplies Bid Number 020-2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
Number five bid for whether to comment or three, two, eight, three, five, no bid, and approximately twelve, two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board of Education awards the Paper Supplies Bid Number 028-2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, number five bid, uh, for whether to comment, uh, approximately, two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education awards Reconditioning of Athletic Uniforms Bid Number 054-2014-15 to the lowest responsible bidders as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments?
If there's a reason, they'll have two hundred and five, they're, 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 they're.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the Auditor Appointments for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, one abstention, Mary. Board of Education approves the Architect Appointment for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And another, okay. Did you get that, Mary? Okay. The Board of Education accepts with thanks a dresser, mirror, and bed frame from Ms. Patrice, Ms. Patrice Racklin to be used in the middle school with students in the 811 Life Skills classes as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Press. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Ms. Rack.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education accepts with thanks a check in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred dollars from the Leadership Council to be used for school-to-career functions as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? I just had a quick question myself. The Leadership Council, is that the student leadership? So they, it's money that they raised?
Correct, and then they have to, um, as a group, vote and decide that this is what they want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yes, thank you very much, Leadership Council. The Board of Education declares obsolete a chickering console piano, number 194001 at Steele School, which is not worth the cost of repair. Per state rules and regulations as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the Use of Facilities Report for June 2014 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Robori. Seconded by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the establishment of a Baldwin Retired Teachers Association Scholarship in the amount of five hundred dollars for a deserving student meeting certain qualifications as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Robori. Seconded by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Reed.
I was just curious, and pardon my ignorance in this, um, we're approving this because are we, do we have any responsibility in doing this, or is this something being managed by the group that's asking us to do this?
The, the, the group that is asking this gives us the money. They set the criteria, like by board policy, um, you have to accept and approve these so that it is authorized for them to be delivering the money for us to send.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the CPSE, CSE Recommendations for Membership for the 2014-15 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Board of Education approves the Project Save Code of Conduct as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, does anyone have anything to bring up under other?
I do have one quick thing. Um, so I was just wondering, only because I have a child who's going to middle school in September, and several times this past month, she's been coming home saying, oh, so-and-so's not going to the middle school, going to this other, you know, public school, and I was wondering if we do any sort of exit survey for people who are deciding to take their kids out of the public school system and put them in private schools, so that, I mean, it'd be nice to keep more kids in district, and do we do something like that? Do we know why people leave?
Uh, no, we haven't done an exit survey. We've done some statistical analysis to kind of look at age, where they go, um, kind of gender and ethnicity, um, so we have a little bit of a sense of some of that, but we haven't done any kind of official exit survey where we ask them to fill out paperwork and tell us why.
Or just ask them, like, why, why are you leaving now?
No.
No, we, we, you know, I was just gonna say, didn't, didn't BEA at some point have a conversation about that? I thought we had a.
I think two years ago, it was a charge under the BEA Community Relations.
That's what I.
They collected the data.
Okay, I thought that this had been a conversation.
I cannot remember the data, but there was a conversation, there was a report.
Okay, but I, Mr. Skinnell's just saying to me that that was where they collected the data on who, but not why. They didn't do the.
I'm really interested to know, like, why. I mean, I understand if they want there to be a religious education, but if there's something else that we're not offering or that lacking, that's making them go somewhere else. I think that would be good.
There could be, you know, I've heard, because my daughter's in eighth grade, gone up to the high school, and she's, some of her friends are going off to private schools, so that could be maybe a charge for the School Community Relations Committee this year for the BEA, maybe.
But, yeah, that's a thought, because I, my suspicion is that that, we are not unique in that.
Yeah.
You know, that we may, there may be other districts that find the same, you know, the same kind of issue.
Sure, yeah.
And we could find out.
Okay. I had a question.
Sure.
Um, it was regarding something that came across one of our Friday mailings regarding the decentralization of ELL, um, and also adding special needs fifteen-one and eight-one classes to being brought to Plaza. Can we have a little discussion or a little bit more explanation as to what, why that's occurring?
Um, yeah, two things. In terms of the ESL, we have been watching the size of our ESL population for a number of years. It has been growing. Our tradition has been that the students in the Meadow geographic area have gotten their ESL services there because it's our largest school, there are enough students to kind of make it efficient and make it, make sense. And then the students at Milburn who needed ESL services got those services at Steele because, again, we were now trying to collect enough students so that we could do it efficiently. And then Plaza would capture ESL students from Plaza, Lennox, Schubert at the time, and Brookside. But we have been watching the population, and a couple of things have kind of happened this year that tells us that it makes sense now that we have enough students that it would be appropriate to decentralize them. The first thing is with the closing of Milburn, they all go to Steele now, so at this point in time, it's, and with the closing of Schubert, it's only Lennox and Brookside students that aren't receiving the service in their home school. We also have enough students so that it makes sense to, we can do it efficiently in the home school, and that certainly is advantageous to the students to be able to be receiving it in their geographic location, their kind of neighborhood friends and so forth, and frankly, potentially their siblings, because we do have some families where one child receives services and the other child doesn't, so it was, in fact, possible for one child to be at one elementary school and the other child, let's say, to be at Plaza. And then the other thing that happened this year, and that just makes sense in terms of what's good for kids, but then the other thing that happened this year is with the shift in the transportation distances, an additional burden was placed on some of the families that had one child in one school and the other child in the other, because with the one-mile distance for elementary, when you were split, you often could have put one child on the bus to go to Plaza and then walked your other child, let's say, to Lennox. With the two-mile distance, that Plaza student now didn't live far enough away to get the bus, so you literally had to have two different kids in two different places at the same time. So we believe that now we can do this efficiently. Bottom line is, it's also what's good for kids. And then kind of similarly, in terms of special ed, we have also been watching decentralizing special ed a little bit. The population has grown. With the neediest students attending Meadow, that means that Meadow has really seen that population grow significantly, and two things have happened really over the course of this year. Based on our projection that we need additional classes, we really don't feel that there's adequate space left at Meadow to add those classes. There is adequate space at Plaza, so by moving, and we're gonna move two fifteen-one classes to Plaza, by moving them to Plaza, there's room. Two, it kind of is the first step towards decentralizing a little bit, and three, by looking at the enrollment, we can get more kids actually receiving a service, if not looking at the enrollment, we can get more kids actually receiving a service, if not in their home school, actually closer to home, and that is the way we're, you know, building the enrollment in those classes. So again, it is also largely about what's good for kids.
As a follow-up, are there cost implications?
There really aren't, well, there are a couple of minor cost implications. The ESL growth is not perfectly as efficient as it is right now, so we would expect that we would have to increase ESL staffing by .5 a half. And then similarly, by adding a special education to Plaza, we'll have to increase the school psychologist staffing at Plaza from .5 to 1.0.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I open the floor, I just want to mention a couple of upcoming dates. Elementary schools have an AM session only on Wednesday, June 25th, and the last day of school is Thursday, June 26th. High school graduation is Friday, June 27th at 5:00 at the high school, and our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting is on Wednesday, July 9th at 8:00 in the district office. Open floor now for comments from the public, and just give us your name and address so we can reply if we need to.
This year, I believe there was an appropriation of $35,000, around $35,000 to improve our website. It was improved, and I was wondering whether that had sunset, in other words, I'm taking over our own website now.
Yeah, the actual cost was about $7,000.
Oh, okay.
And that, and we are now, again, largely responsible for, well, we are always responsible for maintaining the content, but we'll manage the appearance ourselves going forward and try to keep it as up to date, but if some point down the road, two years, three years down the road, we decide it needs a major renovation, we'll look to see if we have the internal capacity, if not, we could consider another consultant.
The other thing is, there was a suggestion that we should review our longstanding contract, opposing relationship with vendors, specifically Ingraham Smith, and of course, Mrs. O'Hagan and Mr. Skinnell are members of the board, when our Ingraham Smith lawyer reduced the board and the school that was responsible for the buy business, we run the board at that time, and so that was certainly agreed to, that thinks was a lot on, well, and yet there was, you know, no repercussions. And I think, I've looked over the contracts, they're all one-sided, I mean, we see more evidence of this cozy relationship. Administrators of both of 11-month and 10-and-a-half-month administrators, and yet they worked nine-and-a-half months or 10 months. So they're playing ball with you, and of course, they played ball with our superintendent, Dr. Kathy White, by hiring her after she was fired. So I think the cozy relationship has played out with negative repercussions for our leadership, and we should, we should just fire them and find another law firm, and maybe they'll move you back, you know, maybe you will be dissatisfied, but we gotta open it up a little bit. It's credit themselves, the lawyer wasn't a rogue lawyer, he did it with the full knowledge of his partners, so this, you know, bears upon the whole firm, and yet, nothing was done. So I was wondering, if this was raised, and whether there has been any follow-up, and looking for, you know, heartbeat for new work.
The services that we use, whether they're architects, or legal counsel, or whatever, are, RFPs are sent out on a cyclical basis, and, you know, we recently renewed our contract with Ingraham Smith, they will be coming up again in a year or so.
Right now.
Oh, okay, right now, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we just renewed.
No, you didn't renew.
We didn't renew yet, I'm sorry. I apologize. But they're done on a cyclical basis, so, you know, we, I guess if we were dissatisfied, we would, we would not have them.
I did request that RFPs go out for professional services, and I was dissatisfied with the manner in which they went out, which is why I abstained from the votes this evening on the professional services.
And the last thing is, we've had some refinements, not enough, but the refinements are a good opportunity to get our costs down with the new teachers that you hired. Now, a couple of years ago, we hired many more than, you started a specialized teacher of $90,000, and just recently, a junior, $90,000. Now, maybe she's a miracle worker, maybe I've got into a bidding war with the, you know, some other firm, but what I'm saying is, you gotta start, you know, your retired teacher had $125,000, like you said, you need that differential to balance a budget, you know, the state is putting pressure on you, you haven't been promoted, you're over 10, you're over 10, and about time you start running this place like a business. No reflection on our business department, because the perfectly competent bureaucracy, if you run this place, likely your office, and you always thought you can always access more, and you could, like I said, it's like a true fish in a garden, but now the pressure's on, and you put pressure on people, you know, there's a house on every block that has been pre-closure, people have to leave town before they can graduate, what you're doing is not right, and it's also recognizing all the people, not just teaching administration, little community. So I think that is an opportunity for the new teacher, negotiate better contracts, especially on the tier five, tier six teachers that are coming in, the others, or, I know you have, you're still working on a contract, but the tier, most part teachers are tier three, tier four, they don't care about the new teachers. You gotta start these teachers lower, and you gotta cast them lower, the cast for teachers should be $90,000, they should never go lower. They, you know, their salaries are amplified by detention, amplified by the substandard work, they only work 35 to 38 weeks a year, and that has to be taken. So the use of this opportunity with the new teachers, there aren't enough retiring personnel, and that's...
Okay. If you're gonna speak, can you come up so everyone can hear you?
I just want to thank the Board for, I mean, protecting, thanks for, of course, these teachers, who are our great teachers, I, my question really comes down to the field test, there are common core field tests, if you're trying to, something, and, and, I'm just like, if you're trying to, this field test that comes our way, non-invested, you can't, so I think, um, this year, the field test for ELA, we give the teachers, the kids came up very keen, walked into, the overview, the back vision was coming on, and there's a lot of pressure right now from the time here, almost more importantly, with their trying to take away the kids, of course, because, um, they're taking this contact, they're removed, and the infant, the kids, they're trying to find a way to train, this type of stuff, that really, we never see it as parents, you never see it, because I am not as, I'm sorry, you know, I'm concerned that we can start, but I don't think it's really ten, because it's out of the building, if we can avoid it, and next time you're doing the field test, let us know, we can find any love to be given, and I'm just, I'm like you, I do that, and I'm a person that likes to be, like, you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrice.
Yeah, the only thing I could particularly speak to is, the state has made it clear that they expect that the field test will be administered, and that they view it as an obligation of the school district, and, you know, they never really say what the consequences would be, but, you know, they always try to at least say there would be. We did, however, in fact, using the process that is in place with the state, request permission not to give a few of the field tests because they were just on very bad dates, or one in particular, we were requested to give a field test that was gonna be more than a period long, that we just didn't feel that we could accommodate, we asked for permission not to give them, we were granted that permission. We also did have one field test show up unannounced, where, because usually the state tells us in advance, we had one field test show up unannounced, we called the state and told them that, you know, it was unannounced, we're sending it back, and we didn't administer that one. But by and large, you know, we complied with what we view as our obligation.
Could I just ask how much notice the state could be made to do that it feels up?
Usually a couple of months.
So is there a way that we could give parents?
Yeah, we could, because, you know, I'm not sure how generally people, because I had, we had people opt their children out, or we choose the field testing, so, you know, I'll check to see exactly how we communicated that information, but there certainly were some people that were aware, but it may not be because of us for sure, so.
So is that something we need to expect, that we're needing, whether we're gonna have...
Post the schedule.
...know if I...
We probably could post it on the website. Yeah, let's talk, let's talk about, yeah, that's fine, I don't know why we couldn't post it.
Yeah.
The thing, you know, and we can post it, we just have to also make sure that we're
careful about not confusing people, because, for example, the field tests show up by school, so it could be a Steel third-grade ELA field test, not everybody, so we don't wanna, so we'd have to just make sure people understood that that's the way that works.
It's not all, yeah.
But in large, the problem, anyway, happens, certainly, first, a very public confession to the degree, I mean, remember, we've been, we've been, but, that's it. Second thing, that's for adding numbers to, to, I wouldn't say we have to add it to that, but, 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 having to get sense of numbers, uh, at a certain time. Third thing, if there are timeframes or timelines that we would have to use, and, we're talking with live office, or, you've been involved.
Our projection was to complete the process, to have, you know, an announcement certainly by the end of June. So that was, we are in the process now, so, you know, I can't give you a definitive answer, but that was the intent when we began, was to be able to make an announcement by the end of June.
Do you think, uh, have an instrument for, for, for...
We'll certainly make an announcement to that effect, yes. Gotta have somebody, so, you're welcome.
Regarding the field test, what happens if we send it back? I know options I did, um, did, absolutely, there were at least, I've done a dozen, we sent it back. What happens if we send it back? Could you say? No?
It remains to be seen.
It remains to be seen.
You know, but the state certainly makes it clear, and there is also, one would also have to recognize that it is not only, it's an obligation that could be viewed of the board and the district, but also specifically of the superintendent of schools in terms of the oath that the superintendent takes to act and uphold the rules and regulations of SEB. So the consequences could potentially be not just for the school district if in fact something happened, but for the superintendent as an individual.
In state education laws, if anything in the state education law that requires that we administer field tests?
The state, the state, when they put it out, very specifically say that they view the field test as part of the required curriculum.
Who gives them?
Who gives them? We give.
The field test.
You get the, that's, I, that's...
Here's the...
Fine, but that's, that's not the debate that I feel that we need to have.
Maybe they could get, maybe our lawyers could do a memo for us on the topic of field tests.
Oh, and they have, and they're gonna tell us that that's, that's viewed as the obligation of the school.
And they could, and they could give us some sites to...
If these questions take several days out of destruction in addition to all of the other tests that have to be done, how much does the district be compensated for this time used for Pearson to try out test questions on our kids for some future...
Nothing, of course. Nothing, of course.
Nothing, okay, and Pearson makes money off of these tests, correct?
Yes.
They have a few dollars, I think, so why are we allowing them free access to our children when they could, at least, at minimum, compensate the school district for the time that's required to give these tests, considering they stand to make billions of dollars off of these tests? Why are we giving them access to our children for free? There's no real consequence. There really isn't. I mean, you know, they can threaten to send the flying spaghetti monster down to beat up the members of the Board of Education, but, you know, until there's something in writing that says it's going to happen, I don't see what the problem is. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of money, and I personally don't want my kid doing free labor for Pearson. If they want access to my child, I should be able to sign off on that access, and there should be some compensation, at least to the school district for the time it's spent at this conference. And if we want to keep from confusing people about the third-grade takes ELA and the second grade takes M.A.L., it's really easy for all to buy, send it back, and then on the website, you can put, we will not be administering field tests this year, and I would find that very simple, and just, there, you know, what are they gonna do? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see, no other questions? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Okay.
Mrs. Robori, seconded by Mr. Press. All those in favor? Aye.